Good evening, everyone. This is calling to order Baltimore City Council. We are in session as committee as a whole. Tonight, we're going to hear about bills twenty-one dash one seven two, one seven three, and one seven four. They're a package of bills called House Baltimore that we introduced the end of last year. This is, I believe, our third meeting regarding this particular package. What we wanted to do is to ensure that we gave timely reference for agencies in the administration to review the bill. So the first session we did kind of covered the bill line by line, the bills line by line, to ensure we were all on the same page, to ensure that we got ahead of any misinformation or ambiguity or concerns or questions. This particular meeting, what we really want to do is provide the agencies an opportunity to come and provide any support, objections, concerns, or questions directly to the council, as well as provide the opportunity for general public to make any public statements or comments associated with the bill. At this point, I would like to recognize on the meeting, we have Chairman Slyfer, Chairman Costello, Councilmember Bullock, Councilmember Burnett, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Madam Vice President, Sherring Green Middleton, Councilman Zeke Cohen, and Councilman Ryan Dorsey. Also, I see we have on the bridge Chairwoman McCray and Councilman Torrance, as well as Councilman Robert Stokes. I believe that is all the members of the Baltimore City Council that we have on with us. From Baltimore City Council staff, we have Ms. Nikki Thompson, Director Thompson, as well as Nathan Poole, Lucy Faunt. I believe that's all the members of council staff that we have, as well as Matt Stegman. From Council Services, we have Mr. Larry Green, who's going to be the facilitator and operator of the meeting tonight. And then from the administration, we have Nina Themelis, Bob Senome from Budget, Alice Kennedy from Department of Housing, Community Development. Sorry, I'm just going through who I'm seeing on. Victor Torella from the Law Department, Stephanie Murdoch from Housing, Stacy Fried, Sophia Gabart, and Shamaya Kearney from the Recovery Office. At this time, before we get into agency reports, just want to give the council an opportunity. Any members, do you have anything to bring up at this time before we turn it over to the agencies? Hearing and seeing none is what I thought. So I think one of the most important agencies clearly is Department of Housing and Community Development. So I'd like to call Ms. Alice Kennedy to the floor. How are you doing, Director Kennedy? Thanks for joining us today. Commissioner Kennedy, thanks for joining us today.
Hey, Council President, good afternoon. I just wanted to ask a question in terms of process. Are we, are you doing comments and bill reports on each bill back to back? Or do you want to do one and then move to the next?
No, I think that's a great question. No, I think it makes sense for us to just kind of do it all together. They all flow together. So if you could just give us your concerns, your support, your opposition, just all together.
Okay. So I think I'm going to go in order because they do have overlap, but they also have differences that we want to highlight. So I'm going to start providing some background and comments on City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one seven two, Baltimore City Legacy Residence Urban Homesteading Program. While D H C D supports the intent of the program, we do currently offer a variety of resources and opportunities for homeowners, for future homeowners, as well as legacy residents through our Office of Homeownership and Housing Preservation. We also at the agency have a dedication to creating opportunities for homeownership across the city. We see opportunities for homeownership as key to the revitalization in Baltimore City, and we also see it as a key factor as we look to reverse and address the negative impacts that we've experienced in the city from racial segregation, redlining, and racist housing policies that the city has experienced over the years. We also recognize homeownership opportunities as a significant factor as we look to build generational wealth, and specifically Black generational wealth and minority generational wealth as well. The programs that we have within the Office of Homeownership and Housing Preservation support a path to homeownership, as well as we also have programs that lessen the maintenance burdens of homeownership for some Baltimore City residents as well. Some of those activities that we have are, you know, housing rehabilitation repairs, our weatherization program, our lead housing reduction program, tax sale prevention. We also have a range of programs and home buying incentives that support the purchase of properties across the city. And those range from our Baltimore City Employee Homeownership Program, which provides a $5,000 incentive for Baltimore City employees who have been employed with the city for at least six months, our Buy Into Baltimore Incentive Program in partnership with Live Baltimore, and our Community Development Block Grant Homeownership Incentive Program, which provides the $5,000 for first-time home buyers. And that is, that program is specific to household income at or below eighty percent of area meeting income. And we do see often that those support, that eighty percent of area meeting income does support residents that are looking to purchase properties into the low to mid-two hundreds, depending upon the family size and their family size and qualifying income. So between Baltimore City Employee Program, Buy Into Baltimore, the Community Development Block Grant Program, there we have potentially three incentive programs that currently exist that can provide homeownership incentive and down payment assistance for residents looking to purchase a property. We also couple with that for those residents who have a household member with a disability. We have our Direct Homeownership Assistance Program, which provides an additional $5,000 for C D B G homeownership Assistance for those residents that also have a household member with a disability. And then our Vacants to Value Booster is a $10,000 incentive in existence for those properties that were subject previously to a vacant building notice for at least one year prior to the rehabilitation of the program. So there are currently a number of homeownership incentive programs to assist with down payments and closing cost assistance. And these incentives can also be coupled together. So you can receive a Vacants to Value Booster for $10,000, as well as a C D B G incentive for $5,000, and have $15,000 there for assistance for your down payment and closing costs also. Or if you also happen to be a city employee and qualify as well for C D B G or live near work, you can also do that. So that can be $20,000. We also make sure to make any homebuyer aware, and our homeownership and homeownership counseling agencies across the city assist in making residents and homebuyers aware of also the state programs and state mortgage programs and down payment assistance programs that exist. And we often see clients that, and residents that couple both state and local incentives together to achieve the assistance that they need. We currently conduct a no wrong door, single point of entry for those programs. And, you know, we also currently strategically acquire, manage, and dispose of real property to create the housing and economic development opportunities for Baltimore neighborhoods. Our Development Division, we have four methods for the purchase of city-owned property. We do, you know, someone can do, if we do a request for proposal for some of the larger or requests for qualifications, we have an expression of interest. Those are typically for larger parcels of city-owned property or sometime bundled parcels or bundled, single-family detached properties, as well as our side yard program. And most relative to the proposed legislation on the urban homesteading, specific to this bill, is our Vacants to Value Program, which is essentially geared towards interested homeowners, small developers, or entities wishing to purchase a city-owned property for renovation and to either occupy the property. We have homeowners that do purchase properties through Vacants to Value and obtain the necessary financing and funding needed. And then we also have work with developers and other entities that are also looking to purchase for either resale for homeownership, affordable homeownership, or other homeownership. Specific to the proposed legislation on Bill Number twenty-one dash zero one seven two, we did have some areas that we wanted to highlight and some significant areas of concern that we had. One of the first is that the legislation specifically does not take into account the necessary capital access and app access to capital that's needed to complete renovations, which, based on our experience and knowledge of not just what we're seeing from homeowners that are purchasing from Vacants to Value and obtaining rehabilitation loans, but also private market and what we're seeing and the condition of the properties that we know are in the city's inventory. We know that those renovations would be costing anywhere from $100,000 to $300,000, depending upon the size and the condition of the property. So one of the key pieces is ensuring that residents have access to that capital for the renovation loans that would be necessary, whether or not it's an FHA two oh three K or a conventional conforming rehabilitation loan in order to have that access to capital, the necessary income and down payment assistance that's needed in order to close on the property. We feel that in some ways, the legislation's duplicative in nature and it also is contradictory to standard lending practices and in some cases restrictive. We feel that it could complicate or hinder the use of some of the standard acquisition and rehab loans, such as the FHA two oh three K. You know, our concern there is around some of the timing that's been outlined in the legislation, which does not match timing that is in place in the private market with the use of these loans. An FHA two oh three K loan requires draws based on completed work and inspections that are managed. Typically, there is, with an FHA two oh three K loan, there's typically an appraiser that's associated with that loan that monitors construction work and goes in to approve draws as needed for those loans. And the loans also would not provide for funds to be held in an escrow account, which was one piece of the legislation as put forth. Because essentially, there's the rehab, it's the purchase rehab, and then those funds are held, the lender holds the funds, and then they're drawn down directly from the lender. And so that would complicate access to those, to that capital that's needed to complete the property reservations. It also calls for the property to be leased to the prospective buyer while the repairs are being made. By leasing the property, this prohibits a buyer to obtain that financing and capital needed to complete the rehabilitation of the property and to obtain a use and occupancy permit. A mortgage, a two oh three K loan, or a conventional rehabilitation loan, it goes to settlement, just like any other property. So you have to go to settlement. There's appraisals involved. There's the appraisal of the house as is. There's the appraisal of the house with the completed renovation costs associated with it. And that property goes to a settlement with the owner. So you become the owner of the property, and then you undertake the necessary repairs and renovations per the stipulations that are laid forth through those lending practices. So that is an area that we feel also would need to be addressed and has a concern because by stipulating that it's a lease on the property, then that we are prohibiting people to be able to obtain access to the necessary capital that's needed to complete the renovations. We also had concerns about the restrictive nature of the location of properties as proposed in the legislation, where the cost of the rehab will be greater than the area's sales prices, which would also immediately put potential buyers underwater and also have impact on their ability to obtain financing based on what the, how the appraised value is taken into consideration when lenders are evaluating what total cost is, you know, they can put in on the renovation side of the property. Also, the timing of the requirements in the legislation for obtaining a use and occupancy permit, but then still allowing for repairs after the use and occupancy permit do not align because the use and occupancy permit is provided after all repairs and renovations have been completed and have met the standards per building code and an use and occupancy permit has been issued to that property, which would allow the resident to live in the property at that point in time. So any time before that use and occupancy permit is provided, habitating, you know, that property still would not be considered allowable, given that there's still a vacant building notice on the property until the use and occupancy permit is issued. The majority of properties that are city-owned properties, we've done analysis. A majority of properties are next to private vacant, which also limits any participant, A, that could be an issue with obtaining the financing and mortgage that's needed for the renovation loan, but also limits the participant's ability to obtain homeowner's insurance, which also would be a critical component of obtaining financing for the property. As drafted, it calls for us to establish a registry of properties that meet certain criteria in the neighborhoods. We already have identified four impact investment areas within that and would suggest working on how those identified areas are called in that registry. We do already have a public-facing registry of all properties, including buildings and vacant lots that are available to purchase. So that currently already does exist. So that would be something that we'd want to talk about that would not necessarily be required under, as a requirement under the bill as put forth now. It also requires the agency to determine if a property is able to be, quote, repaired and make compliant with the building fire-related codes and health articles. D H C D will not be able to definitively determine if a building is able to be repaired and make compliant without specialized expertise. And we do not have that expertise in-house to do that. Essentially, any property that would undergo renovation to obtain a use and occupancy permit would need to be compliant with the building fire-related and health articles. And that would also be a key component of an assessment that would be done under a renovation loan process that would also be evaluated by the lender as part of their appraisal process to determine if they felt that the property was able to be repaired and what the estimated cost of repairs would be. Because that is also something that the, you know, the legislation also requires the agency to conduct a property inspection and produce an estimate. We don't currently have staff expertise or resources to produce an estimate of the cost of repairs. And those evaluations would be made by a licensed contractor that the buyer would be working with and/or also as part of the renovation to a renovation loan process where inspectors and appraisers put together what a scope of work would be for a property to determine what is on the scope of work and what is needed in order, by code, in order to complete the renovations and obtain a use and occupancy permit. The legislation also calls on the agency to determine if a property is, quote, likely to be purchased by a prospective homeowner. You know, there is no requirement in the legislation that we see that the participant make the property their principal residence for any specified amount of time after the transfer of ownership from the city. So we'd want to review that as well. You know, D H C D recognizes, and like I said in my opening, kind of opening remark before going into some of the specifics, you know, we recognize the negative impact that policy, housing policy has had over the years on our Black and Brown communities, you know, from redlining to historic disinvestment. And our agency is committing, committed to redressing the systemic issues that have plagued our city. We've been conducting a review of the property disposition policies to identify opportunities to advance equitable access to property, as well as increase disposition efficiencies. We're an active participant in the Comptroller's Office Property Disposition Working Group and realize that there are opportunities for improved collaboration related to the property disposition process. Currently, all city-owned property is listed publicly, and anyone can submit an offer to purchase. These properties are mostly in disinvested, historically redlined neighborhoods. And once again, anybody at this time can submit an offer. And we do work with residents that submit offers. And we have one success story on that that I'd point out. We have a resident that submitted applications for two properties in the Upton community. And she worked to renovate the property for her own personal residence. And the other property that was next door worked to renovate that property for her daughter and family members to live as well. So we do dispose of property to homeowners and prospective homeowners. It is not just a process that only disposes of property to investors or developers across the city, or to people that are only looking to create new rental opportunities. We recognize the importance of creating homeownership opportunities across the city throughout our work. We do currently require proof of financing in order to fully renovate the property. And we typically anticipate and expect a $90,000 at this moment in time, a $90,000 renovation funding minimum. So we, you know, to purchase a property, we require that you've essentially already looked at obtaining your renovation loan for the property or that you have cash on hand to complete a renovation at a minimum of $90,000. A key change to that policy is that we are reviewing a timing for closing on a property and looking to move and utilize an escrow process like what's being suggested. But we're still working through what some of those, what that would look like. It doesn't require funding to be an escrow, but it's a way to put the, look at the requirements on the title and deed restrictions so that if a renovation does not occur within a timely manner, that we have an easier opportunity for revert or for a reverter clause on that property. If renovations are not completed, but we're still flushing that out and reviewing the impacts on that so that we don't end up creating something that has a negative impact on people's ability to obtain necessary financing. If they're able to get the renovation loans, we want to be able to ensure that they're able to get to the settlement table and move that forward. You know, we do have some plans in place. We're working on reducing the time in terms of just overall disposition, which would also assist in homeowners with purchasing properties. And we're working on a number of different things, from implementing our new slate software to, you know, reaffirming those rehab pricing minimums and providing clear and consistent paths for application review for anyone that's coming in to purchase those properties. You know, keeping low-income homeowners in their homes is a key strategy, like I said. And also creating homeownership opportunities. So one thing as well, you know, we have some operational, as we've stated, operational fiscal concerns regarding the implementation of the legislation. It's duplicative of many services and incentives that we already provide. And, you know, have some specific areas in terms of how the bill defines legacy residents. You know, the bill is defining a legacy resident as an individual who resides in the city of Baltimore for a period of fifteen continuous years prior to June thirty, 2022, or for at least fifteen continuous years before moving out of Baltimore City, subsequent to a foreclosure, short sale, or deed in lieu of foreclosure on a home that was a residence, principal resident for those fifteen years and was purchased or refinanced during the period beginning on January first, 2001 and ending December thirty-first, 2008. That definition raises several questions that we believe are worth additional consideration. If a resident lost a habitable house because of foreclosure, would they have the capital or credit during that time to be able to apply for and receive the necessary funding through renovation loans, either FHA or conventional, to renovate the vacant property? What type of foreclosure does the legislation apply to? Is it just mortgage foreclosure? Is there also tax sale foreclosure? And we feel that there are areas of that that provide ambiguity that we would suggest as we continue to kind of work through some of that language suggest on deleting. You know, we at D H C D define a legacy resident as someone who has resided in a property in the city of Baltimore for just a straight period of fifteen continuous years. This also kind of outlines, the bill and proposed legislation outlines eligibility requirements for program participation. Currently, we evaluate applications to determine the appropriateness of the proposed project or rehabilitation, the feasibility of the proposed development, the capacity of the applicant to undertake and complete the project, and the ability to demonstrate appropriate financial resources, as well as acceptable credit history, a record of responsible property ownership and management. And where applicable, also potentially previous experience or understanding of a, you know, what it takes to work through a renovation of a property. That's something that both for, I think, developers or new developers, but also homeowners. Sometimes, you know, even to undertake, doing a small bathroom renovation or kitchen renovations, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces and wanting to ensure that we can help provide homeowners the best information possible and support possible for undertaking a significant project, such as fully renovating and rehabilitating a vacant property in Baltimore, which has significant, can have significant challenges and setbacks, even for the most seasoned, seasoned construction person or person that rehabilitates properties across the city. The eligibility requirements as proposed in the legislation, we feel are confusing. It's open to individuals who are eighteen years or older, is a legacy resident, and is a first-time homebuyer. So we think that we would want to evaluate that for additional either ands or ors to be added or to evaluate how that would work through. Also, the ownership verification would not be difficult to determine, but as laid out in the proposed legislation, actual proof of residency would be very difficult to establish at a level that may be able to withstand an audit. Verification of residential addresses and lengths of residency may be impractical to verify dating back ten continuous years. It would be difficult to determine if program applicants who are renting in Baltimore are in compliance with their term or their current lease. And this would add to a significant, significant staffing capacity. We at the agency have overall concerns around additional staffing capacity that the program would require to evaluate applications for the eligibility requirements laid out in the bill. Additional staff would be needed to complete application verification. Software upgrades may be needed to manage that process. The agency process for application approval does not need to be The agency process for application approval does not need to be, um, we don't feel that it needs to be included in the enabling legislation and may be better suited for rules and regulations that would be adopted to carry out the program. And we feel, once again, that the program participation requirements laid out are more stringent than existing Vacants to Value program and could potentially limit the number of, of participants. Once again, as it relates to the registry, it, the legislation calls on the department to establish a registry of properties that meet certain criteria. We've identified the impact investment areas in east, west, southwest and Park Heights that have been historically overlooked for revitalization initiatives and subjected to redlining. And we're focused on building markets and wealth creation through homeownership in historically disinvested communities throughout the city with a targeted approach that builds off of strength and is able to provide opportunities for affordable homeownership with an understanding as well that one of the key areas is also looking to how to close appraisal gaps and how to look at blocks where we have strong existing homeownership or rental markets, but maybe one city-owned vacant property. And right now, the city-owned properties are in and on blocks that are over fifty percent vacant and even a higher percentage of those properties are also next to a vacant property either on one side of, on one side of them, which also makes rehabilitation of that property even more difficult. The bill has criteria that designates neighborhoods to meet certain criteria identified in the bill. You know, we are already focused on the community development work throughout the city. By further limiting neighborhoods eligible for participation in the program, we are concerned that we could run the risk of reinforcing some of the negative impacts by limiting any potential inventory of eligible properties available for revitalization. Currently, all, unless it, the properties are identified as part of work for another development project through site assembly or demolition, because we also have city-owned properties that are, you know, part of the site assembly that we do for demolition work or site assembly that we do for development work. All of the city-owned properties are currently available for for purchase by anyone, including homeowners can obtain a city property and obtain the financing needed to renovate that property and put it back into productive, into productive use. So we do just have concerns about how some of the suggested bill language does potentially have an unintended consequence on limiting access to the program. Depending upon where a resident lives or if they live like outside of one block of the designated boundary or something along those lines. You know, once again, we said that we have the public-facing registry. So we would want to discuss looking at deleting the registry requirements that are in the bills on specific lies, and we can provide that in a different work session where we could go line by line and look at needed amendments or changes in that regard. You know, the, we also have suggesting in terms of some of the reasons why we're looking at this is, you know, there are lines in the bill that require the agency to determine if a property is able to be repaired or made compliant. And, you know, theoretically, every building that has a vacant bu- building notice could be repaired and made compliant, provided that the owner has the financial resources and the willingness to do so. So unless in a building official's opinion, a structure is so dangerously unsound or deteriorated that rehabilitation is not feasible and the structure needs to be demolished, we as an agency would not be able to definitively determine if a building is able to be repaired and made compliant without specialized expertise. And we offer currently the properties through Vacants to Value are offered on that as-is basis. But we do offer the ability to have all city properties that we own. We do offer that ability. If it's determined to be safe to have a property inspection done before an offer is put on a property. So any of the vacant properties that are available, if you're a prospective buyer, whether or not that it be a homebuyer or a, or a developer or a investor, you can go and tour the property. You can bring your construction crew, your construction manager, architect, engineers, and have them be able to, you know, physically see the property and be able to do what they need to do to be able to prepare the necessary scopes of work and design plans that are needed in order to cost out the cost of that rehabilitation and to obtain the necessary financing. So we already currently offer that period of time for those inspections to occur. Like I said earlier, we have no way of guaranteeing the long-term homeownership outcome after it's been rehabilitated. You know, we couldn't see anything within the proposed bill. And we didn't see a requirement that the participate, participant make the property their principal residence for any specified amount of time after the transfer of ownership from the city. So that would be a question that we'd want to talk through. And like I said, you know, we, it's that, I've, the official term that we use is that inspection right of entry to open the buildings to the potential buyers. So, you know, outside of some of those pieces, we do have serious financial and organizational capacity concerns around the complexity of implementing and managing this program. We're looking that it would cost an additional, based on Department of Finance, an additional seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Additional staff to qualify and monitor the participant progress as as out, currently outlined, any ongoing technical assistance and to obtain any of the necessary expertise, staffing expertise needed for any inspections and so forth, which is one reason why, you know, knowing how it works for typical renovation financing, the homebuyer would have access to that level of expertise in terms of, you know, the lender's appraisal appraiser, which is on a two or three K renovation loan is utilized in a different manner than how you think of a typical home appraiser. They're actually one to help assist with some of those scopes of work and estimates of contracting and then also having the necessary contractors in place to assist with completing that renovation. So, you know, we have, you know, we do the construction right of entry for any property that we determine or, you know, safe. Once again, I'm going to bring up the concern about executing a lease with the Yes, sir.
I appreciate you, I guess, doubling down and then tripling down on some of the concerns. But I think you've, you've said a lot. Do you have any additional new items to bring up? Because wanted to, just thinking about interest of time, wanted to start working through and talking through some of the things that you've already brought up. I think this will be the third time that we're going to talk about the, the lease language that's, that's in the bill. So just make sure that the Department of Housing Community Development, you know, definitely puts on the record all of your concerns. But from a timing perspective, we would like to address maybe some of the concerns that you've already brought up. I, I think that we've kind of heard a lot of them loud and clear. We would like to talk.
So there are a couple of, I'll just keep going through those. And, you know, I respectfully request, I'll make sure to not do some of the repetitive ones. But we do have a couple of additional items that I did want to make sure that we bring up today and are able to share in terms of that analysis that I think are important as we look forward. So while I brought up the lease, there is a piece of this where it isn't just about the about the lease, but it's also the, the bill requirement has language that the program participant obtain a use and occupancy permit and take residency within six months of executing that lease. So I know it's the lease component that we feel would be prohibitive, but there's also a prohibitive piece, we feel on that certificate of occupancy within six months. Because typically, the certificate of occupancy and use and occupancy permit is not going to be provided until all work is completed and it passes all necessary building inspections of the property that are taken out through the permitting process and required by the lender. The other piece is, is that the bill and proposed legislation calls on the agency to complete quarterly inspections of the property to ensure repairs are made and being made. You know, that is something that we don't feel that the agency would be responsible for, for doing at that point. That would be something that would be done through their rehabilitation.
Commissioner Kennedy, now we're getting back again to the two or three K discussion. And I, I think we're prepared to kind of talk about that and go over that. I guess I want to ask just for the interest of time. We're, we're approaching the first hour here. Are there any additional? I'm sorry.
I'm going to talk briefly just about the, based on our analysis, the number of properties that we're talking about being
That's what I mean. If there's any new information or new concerns, definitely interested in you.
So in our bill report, you'll also be able to look at and get additional information on this. And we've provided in the bill report for yourself, council president, as well as members of city council information based on our research and analytics team. Based on our interpretation of the proposed legislation, we are seeing that only three hundred and fifteen city-owned properties in forty-seven out of the city's two hundred and seventy-plus neighborhoods would be eligible for this program. And that's based on our interpretation of the proposed language and the different property stipulations that were put in there. Out of more than fifteen thousand registered vacant building notices, only twelve hundred and eighty are owned by the city. And we have provided also in the bill report, you can look at, you know, how we monitor that on a regular basis and the dashboard to our key dash bash, key stats dashboard monitors that level of vacancy on a daily basis. And you can kind of see where that changes. And like I mentioned earlier, a number of those properties that are in that twelve hundred and eighty, that's encompassing all city agencies within the city. So that's not just D H C D. But we also know that a number of those properties are also tied to specific, you know, specific projects or demolition projects, et cetera. And so we have provided a summary table of, of, of those properties available. Out of the three hundred and fifteen potential houses, only a hundred and fifty are, would be eligible properties. And that would be a hundred and fifty on a block with over fifty percent vacancy, which would, you know, provide an issue when we're looking to obtain that financing, homeowners insurance, et cetera. Out of the three hundred and fifteen, a hundred and ninety-five are properties directly adjacent to another vacant building notice, a private, privately-owned vacant building, which would then cause problems as we're looking to do those renovations. We've done, provided for you some analysis based on neighborhood and, you know, where some of those properties are. And, you know, we've also provided analysis on how those are tied with additional other programs and site assemblies and so forth that we're putting together. So, you know, we, I think that's where I'm going to kind of wrap it up on this specific bill. You know, D H C D has been actively working on an affordable mortgage program. This is something that has been funded through the, our capital budget, and we're working to put together and have kind of done a, a small worked on, kind of looking at the small pilot on that. And specific to that, we're looking to create flexible lending and opening doors to create mortgage opportunities for residents that aren't based on traditional lending practices such as only credit score, only income. And we're looking to target and support that homeownership opportunities in purchasing prices between fifty and eighty thousand, where properties in the city are currently habitable. There is no vacant building notice. And where we may have a legacy resident that's looking to move on and would be looking to sell that property. So I just wanted to highlight that as another way that we are looking to expand homeownership and affordable homeownership in, in the city and across the city. In terms of the next bill, which is the city home repairs and grant programs.
Well, bef- before you move on, I think it's important. I know we said we were going to do them all together. I didn't expect the first one to take an hour, well, fifty minutes, but I, I think that we should stop there and then go into the other two. I think that kind of makes sense. Yeah, I do think you, you, you bring up a, a lot of really, really, really good points. And I think that that's why the council wanted to kind of have this very intentional kind of agency-facing session to allow the administration, the agencies to kind of go over their concerns. We know this is very complex and, and, and very large-scale bill as it relates to the current operations of the city. And the expectation was there would be a lot of questions and concerns. Little disappointed that from the first meeting that we had, we kind of went over a lot of the specifics that seemed not to be really incorporated in the agency's report. I, I think that when we worked with the bill drafter, we knew that there was going to be some time and some and, and, and some back and forth with the administration to ensure that from a technical perspective of our code and everything, that the bill was written in, in a way that, one, achieve the goals, but also, two, fit into kind of the structure of, of the way we need to, to just create the legislation. And many of the things, it, it really is based off of like a two oh three K construction loan at, uh, apparatus. You know, unfortunately, I am intimately involved in understanding of that entire process. At the age of twenty-four, I actually did a two oh three K loan in West Baltimore, a house that was abandoned in the city of Baltimore for over twenty-two years. So when you talk about the drawer schedule, when you talk about the inspector that represents the financial institution, when you talk about the role and responsibility of the city, when we talk about like that time period associated with if it's a lease or if it's not, and how does that look? And when we talk about escrow, that was really like the definition that we thought we could pull off of to kind of explain what a construction loan means, meaning at closing, the person does not receive, you know, all of the capital associated with that loan, but it is set up on a draw schedule. So I say all that, you know, not to go step by step, but we are in more alignment than you probably think based off of legislation. Because it is to be very consistent with the FHA two oh three K type, type of model, and we kind of look to, to, to kind of work with you and work with your, your agency on that. So I'm not going to go step by step through the drawers or the escrow or the lease or the restrictive nature. But I think that we will have additional time, definitely to have work sessions to kind of literally, you know, chip away at all the different, very technical and somewhat very substantive suggestions that you have. But again, I think we're probably more in line than we are different there. I think the one thing that I really wanted to bring up and talk from a D H C D perspective is, I believe I read somewhere a month or two ago that Baltimore City was like thirtieth in the nation as relates to real estate transactions. When we talk about, you know, even looking at our budget line items here in the city of Baltimore, not just for sale of property, but all the ancillary type of, of, of costs and fees and, and things that come into the city that really helped our city coffers because in the midst of a global pandemic, folks were quarantining. Property was still being sold. Property was still kind of going off the roof. So we understand and know, one, the attractive nature of what Baltimore City's number one commodity is, which is our real estate market. But I think it's really important because, you know, I find it interesting that we kind of came up that we kind of came up with the one anecdotal story. I know there's probably other stories out there of the woman who was able to purchase a home, not only one, but two in West Baltimore for herself and for other family members. But I think the concern that Baltimore City residents have seen, and this is nothing that's happened forty years ago or twenty years ago. This is stuff that happened in the year of two thousand and twenty-one, is this idea that residents have this easy access to purchasing properties in their communities and in the city of Baltimore. I think the process has been extremely skewed. Nothing that you've created, but something that has just entrenched in the nature of our system for developers, for speculators, for folks who have the inside access and knowledge to the receivership program to gain properties in the city of Baltimore. And this is something that has been going on for as long as I've been alive. And it's been going well beyond anybody's involvement in the city of Baltimore on this particular call. So I understand and I hear and I'm excited about some of those anecdotal types of stories. But we know that we must do a lot better. So when we talk about some of the things that are running in alignment, when we talk about some of the things that could be mutually beneficial, that's what we kind of see this as a companion to some of the things that we're getting right. But doing it at a much larger level, because we know that window of opportunity is shrinking on a daily basis here in the city of Baltimore. Because there's just so much money that's coming in, there's so much interest that's coming in. And there is no projection that shows that that trajectory is going to change. The one unique thing that we have here in the city of Baltimore that other places did not have or were not able to see is we could literally see the examples of Washington DC or Harlem or Brooklyn in other places where folks were literally displaced out. When we look at it from a gentrification perspective, when we look at the loss of population in the communities and we're seeing that loss, we know where those pockets are coming from. So again, not to go point by point, definitely provide opportunity to, I'm sorry, you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say that I appreciate the comments on, you know, wanting to look at something in terms of trying to provide that opportunity for homeownership to purchase. And I just wanted to remind and put forth that receivership is different than city-owned property. Because at no point in time, you know, like during receivership, the city does not, and for the general public that's listening in for us tonight, I just want to be very clear that, you know, receivership is a code enforcement action that results in a potential rehabilitation of the property or auction through a private receiver. Currently, you know, at the city, we have, like I said, three hundred and fifteen, from our analysis, three hundred and fifteen city-owned properties that would be eligible.
No, and I've heard you state that. Really interested in kind of going over and kind of reviewing that. Sorry to conflate receivership with this. I think I was just trying to really pinpoint the modem of operations that folks have seen in the city of Baltimore. And that is not connecting residents to access to ownership of property through a myriad of different examples, right? So sorry to conflate the idea of what receivership is and what your role as DHCD is on that level of receivership. But when we talk about the prioritization of whiteness, when we talk about the lack of opportunities for homeownership, when we talk about the creeping of gentrification, those are the things that we're really talking about today, be it that's in control of DHCD, or be it inside the real estate department of the comptroller's office, or even at Baltimore City Development Corporation, BDC, right? Wherever the access of real estate in the city of Baltimore has been, it has never been, including all of the properties that were sold in two thousand and twenty-one, in alignment for the benefit of the majority of residents in the city, black and brown communities. So I think that that is the pathway that this legislation is trying to move down. And we're excited about working with the Department of Housing and Community Development to leverage some of the programs that have been existence for a really, really long time, right? With programs that are newer and tax incentives that are newer with this piece of legislation. So definitely understand, and I think, like I said, there's a lot of really good technical and substantive points that you have brought up today. I think that we're probably way more in alignment than you would probably expect as it relates to how can we work with the bill drafters to get it down in a sync way of operations and understanding. But it's really exciting to me that many of the examples that you brought up today is really consistent with the FHA 203K loan. Because that's exactly what we kind of intended as relates to the motivation behind coming up with this relationship of buying a distressed property here in the city of Baltimore and being able to obtain the financing as well as fixing it up and working it with the city of Baltimore. So with that said, are there any questions or concerns from other members of the council at this time for Commissioner Kennedy? All right, Commissioner Kennedy, I think you were going to move on to one seven three?
Yes. So this is City Council Bill twenty-one dash oh one seven three, Baltimore City Home Repairs and Grant Program. We support the intent of the program. And we want to note that we currently offer several home repair assistance programs all geared towards assisting low and moderate income residents across the city. The programs lessen the financial burdens of homeownership for Baltimore City residents. They free up resources to be able to maintain property, pay their taxes, as well as pay homeowners' insurance. And, you know, our homeowners, we provide both deferred loan as well as grant programs, depending upon the program and the available funds. And we prioritize residents at fifty percent below AMI and below with a high priority on residents at thirty percent AMI and below, as well as residents with health problems and young children in the home. A lot of these programs, you know, we can provide up to twenty-five thousand dollars as well as additional assistance depending upon the program and how we're able to review and leverage other other programs to create the best outcome that we can for residents that we're helping with their home repairs. So we currently have a number of repair programs for low-income homeowners. We offer inaccessible homes for seniors, which is a grant and loans to assist homeowners making accessibility-related improvements. So we already have an accessibility-related program. We also have our deferred loan program, an emergency roof repair program, energy savings loan program, home preservation program, our lead hazard reduction grant and loan program, as well as our Maryland housing rehabilitation program, which is below market rate. It's in partnership with the state. We actually administer it on the state's behalf. And that corrects major deficiencies in serious health code and safety issues within the home. We also, as you're aware, we run the weatherization assistance program and the lead hazard reduction program, both of which we work to maximize the amount of funding available to assist a homeowner with repairs that can also go beyond just the lead hazard reduction work or beyond the weatherization assistance work, looking at other major repairs and programs, repairs that are needed within the property. We also partner with thirteen nonprofit and healthcare providers for the housing upgrades to benefit seniors, otherwise known as our HUBS program. You know, HUBS serves the residents of Baltimore, not only just with the repair program component, but we also, you know, serve the residents with social workers based at the HUB sites. And that those improvements not only address the immediate improvements that are needed on a property, but also help make those homes more healthier and secure with fall prevention assistance and other safety items within the house. We, as I said, we have a no wrong door, a single point of entry through our light intake and assessment unit. And that light intake and assessment unit helps evaluate applications and then refer them to the programs that are going to be able to most quickly and efficiently be able to address the issues that that resident is facing. You know, we have some operational and fiscal concerns. The legislation calls on the department to administer a grant program and provide grants of varying amounts to eligible residents in designated impact investment neighborhoods. It also requires us to identify designated impact investment neighborhoods that meet certain criteria. We've already identified those impact investment areas across the city, and those have been historically overlooked by investors and revitalization initiatives. And also, they have assets that can provide a central focus for revitalization. So we would want to look at, you know, kind of changing and looking at those designated neighborhoods and addressing that within the bill language, because we're already kind of focused on that community development work. It also calls on participants to meet certain eligibility requirements for participation in the program and eligibility requirements and proof of residency. Once again, ownership would be not, would not be difficult to determine, but actual proof of residency would be difficult to establish as put forth in the bill language and legislation. It also defines principal residence as a location where an individual regularly resides and is the location designated by the individual for the legal purpose of voting, obtaining a driver's license and filing income tax returns. You know, if the bill is for grants for home repairs, we would recommend that it be amended to clarify that it's for homeowner-occupied properties. Because as written, proof of residence is open to tenants. And that could, that could provide documentation saying that they meet the residency requirements. Also, limiting the household income to at or below eighty percent may, or less, may limit the use of various funding sources that we have with our own income limitations. It's higher than some of the programs and thresholds that we currently use at DHCD. We also, like I said, prioritize residents that are most vulnerable, given the need across the city at fifty percent AMI with a high priority on residents, thirty homeowners, thirty percent AMI and below. So we feel that that would be something for us to address and look at with rules and regulations in terms of how most effectively to carry that out. It also calls for the department to administer the program and provide varying amounts of, you know, to eligible residents for general repairs, accessibility repairs, emergency repairs and mobile home repairs. Mobile homes are currently not defined nor allowed in the city's zoning, building or housing codes. So mobile home repairs need to be deleted from the bill language. And we already provide assistance to those programs that I mentioned above for accessibility repairs, emergency repairs, and also general repairs through our housing rehabilitation and repairs program. And the housing upgrades to benefit seniors program, as I mentioned, also provides those. We see that typically, you know, we can see that we have an average of twenty thousand dollars on loans and grants that we provide. And we also are able to leverage programs so that we leverage existing programs to create the most efficient and effective outcomes for residents. So we may have a resident that takes advantage of lead hazard reduction, but also is able to receive a deferred loan to help with the repairs as well. So in some instances, between the programs, we provide assistance that is well above what has been put forth in the legislation, as well as emergency legislation, emergency repairs as put forth in the bill language. We already provide emergency repairs and provide a higher threshold limit than what is existent in, as set forth in the proposed legislation as well. We have concerns around staffing capacity for the program and would anticipate a need for eight additional staff, which would be an additional cost of seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We also have concerns in terms of another consideration about that the legislation would take effect on the thirtieth day after the date is enacted and remain in effect until November thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. And we would recommend moving the effective date to a hundred and eighty days after enactment to allow time for hiring and program design. Because at this time, we do not have organizational capacity to sand up an additional program, given that we also are staffed at providing the programs that are duplicative in nature to what's been set forth in the legislation. It is unclear how the legislation would be funded barring a new funding source. We do not have financial capacity to implement the program. And, you know, we recognize at DHCD that one of the key aspects to our community development work is keeping our lower-income homeowners and legacy residents and our older adults in our city. Home repair is not just a component of, you know, preserving the community or the neighborhood that we're in or helping to support the other development activities that are going. You know, this is a key strategy for affordable housing. So helping to assist these residents in maintaining their homes, these are key affordable housing units in the city of Baltimore. It's just a little bit different because they're rental units, not home, they're not rental units or homeownership units, but they are key affordable housing units for our city. And we have been working for a number of years on increasing funding availability for these programs. And we'll continue to do that because we know that it's a key strategy, not only to providing and preserving that affordable housing, but also helping to maintain legacy residents, to continue to generate generational wealth and to create opportunities for families well into the future. Because we also recognize that a number of these households are multi-generational families within our communities. So we are always committed to seeking that additional funding to support the programs. But do feel that as the legislation has been put forth, that it is duplicative in nature to all of the programs that we currently offer. And in some ways, what's been suggested in the bill language is more restrictive than the programs that we offer as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Again, you brought up some really good technical as well as substantive things that we look to continue to partner with the administration on. I think kind of the biggest, the biggest message that I kind of heard from you, we look to continue to work with you on this, is duplicative. We kind of saw it a little differently. I know that you feel it's restrictive to certain areas. And we kind of let that open to DHCD for you guys to develop the strategy in which you felt like we got the biggest bang for our buck as relates to, again, connecting legacy residents to homeownership and rebuilding communities. But we don't see this duplicative. We don't see it as surplanting existing programs or existing money. You know, the areas in which we're talking about have for decades been disproportionately disinvested in by the city of Baltimore. So when we say we don't see it as duplicative, we see it, and not as a surplanting, but a supplement to the existing programs. Because, you know, when we look at our communities, particularly communities that we're pointing out, as it relates to, one, the disposition of property to the individuals in which that we're laying out, as well as the level of change of increase of development, we more needs to be done. So again, it's not that it's duplicative, it's that it's a supplement. And it's not that it's restrictive, it's just that we want to kind of hone in on the areas that have been disproportionately disinvested in for far too long. And we know that that's going to take a lot of lift. So again, really appreciate it. And that's the point of today's discussion. Today's discussion was to provide the agencies to really kind of listen to the intent of the bill at the first meeting. listen to the intent of the bill at the first meeting. We all had ability of kind of sitting down and and understanding here in the agenda here from the community. Uh, but now this will allow you to really dig down and provide some of your questions, your concerns, and your issues with the bill for us to work through it.
No, I um definitely appreciate that, uh Council President, and um I I feel that the programs as put forth in the legislation um are the pieces where we feel it's duplicative. Um, I think that we are in agreement that uh more funding is needed to support the programs that already exist. Um, and we already are deploying resources as needed in those um in those impact investment areas to leverage the other investments and to uh make those changes and and support those homeowners with those repairs. So I think that um that's where we think about on the duplicative nature um and more restrictive. The more restrictive piece was also looking at the income limits as set forth by the legislation that we feel that that was more restrictive. So I'm happy to talk to you, you know, further as we work through the legislation and um
It's gonna be tough to go point by point, but um I I think a big piece that you also missed is um the prioritization of the medium of the AMI. Um, so it does, I know that you you highlighted the eighty percent a lot. Um, but, you know, throughout the bill, it really talks about the prioritization from the lowest uh to the highest AMI as it relates to um uh, you know, access to the to the program.
Yeah, and we'll review that as
Yeah, yeah. I again, I think this this is a tremendous step in the right direction. Uh, thank you for taking like such um uh an amazing uh uh time and depth, I know, with with your team to kind of go through legislation. Uh, the council is 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 well-prepared to kind of sit down and go over line by line. We knew that this was going to be a very arduous process. That's why we set up the 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 bill meeting uh and hearings, the way that we set them up uh to to ensure that we're able to walk through and 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 speak the same language uh back and forth. So I appreciate all of the time and the attention that you have uh put into this. At this point, um, are there any other questions or concerns from any other members of the council?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, this is Vice President Middleton. Um, sorry for the back and forth with my camera. It seems like every time I put my camera on, I lose reception, so I'm gonna keep my camera off. But I I ju- um, I just want to, I guess, make a quick statement. Um, just thank you, um Commissioner Kennedy, first of all, for, you know, the wealth of information that you uh have given us. But I just, I feel that we s- no, these bills came about through the findings of what we can all see, particularly through the pandemic. We can't say that enough. And some of the programs that were already in place um had problems. Um, I I just know, one, maybe the weatherization program was off and on because of funding. And I I'm I've I I'm found finding that, you know, a number of the vacant houses and the foreclosures came about, you know, from, and I know that my colleague, um Councilwoman Ramos can attest to this. Um, you know, because we kind of talked about and tried to work on tax sales. Foreclosures really wiped out hard-earned gener- generation wealth that has been built for decades since that Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight. So we are still, our communities, as the president mentioned, and and s- some, a number of us say over and over again in different settings, this has been a burden in our black and brown communities. And I I want to see data where um home repairs were done for things like reverse mortgages. Because some of our, just talking about that, some of our um older adults got into these predicaments in their homes, trying to find that extra money and went and started searching for things like reverse mortgages and looking for other programs. And they, it hasn't helped them because we still keep getting those calls and we still can see the these these problems in our communities as a whole. We, I I say, I seem to say this over and over again. We, as council members, get the calls, we're in the streets. We try to deal directly with individual constituents with all of these problems. And it ju- we we keep, I'm feeling like we're just getting a runaround over and over and over again. So I I just wanted to add that to um the statements that uh was presented. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice President. At this point, are there any other additional questions or concerns for members of the council?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, um, if I may.
Yeah, uh, Councilman, we'll we'll lock the floor. Yours.
Uh, yes, and again, thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. I know we had earlier conversations around some of the uh the program areas that you're working on. Um, you know, uh, kind of um on the same track as uh Vice President Middleton, just a couple of the pieces. So you mentioned several things that were very important, right? So the repairs for low-income uh individuals, um seniors, sort of accessibility, um weatherization, lead hazard, and all that. I think uh one of the challenges we deal with in the city are those folks who tend to be caught in the middle, right? And so we think about those who uh may not fit within um that A- AMI, right? So I think about those who may be relatively young, right, so they're not seniors. They may be a family of four or five, um maybe in that middle income range, looking to do those kind of repairs. And I don't know how uh great a job we are in terms of getting the information out to folks of what products are available um for them. I mean, if folks are looking at just general repairs, trying to make their house more livable. I mean, how do we then um support those kinds of activities? Because I could, I think about those folks who, again, fall right outside those income guidelines. It may not, um, it may not be an emergency, it may not be weatherization, it may not be seniors. So then how do we then look at um that aspect? And then the other piece um really that you mentioned too around um the 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 sources of funding. So if you can kind of talk a little bit about that too.
Yep. So um, a couple of key things around that is that the majority, when you think about the the programs that we have that exist um in our kind of home repair bucket, that it already exists within the city, those are going to be varying below eighty percent AMI. And those can cover everything um from a general repair all the way to um sp- specified roof repair and or specific work with with housing, um seniors um or persons with disabilities. So you have two pieces of that. You have the AMI percentage, which is going to be eighty percent AMI and below. And when you look at eighty percent AMI and below, we are able to assist people through the myriad of different um the myriad of different programs that we have at within those different levels there with a prioritization, looking at thirty percent and below, fifty percent and below, sixty percent and below, et cetera. Um, and weatherization is 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 two hundred percent of poverty, which is well below um the eighty percent AMI. I think one of the things that um I have, you know, talked about in the past and looked at is what if you're eighty percent? When you talk about some families and the income restrictions, that makes me think about um the families um that might be younger families, as you just described, but we need to look at a different um AMI percentage in to capture some of those. Uh, because if they're below the eighty percent, we're capturing them if they qualify based on income um for those general generalized repairs and some of those needs when they come in to complete the application. But I think that if they're eighty percent, like eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, um that that is definitely an area that um we do not have covered uh currently in the city and and one that I've been concerned about for a number of years in my role as deputy commissioner and will continue uh to look at um in in my role as commissioner to assist on that when we think of that kind of higher um AMI percentage. I'm often, you know, stating things like, just because you're eighty-five percent AMI doesn't necessarily mean um that you have, you know, five thousand dollars uh ready and available to um to do a complete tear-off and and replacement of your roof or a single-family detached home, if it's larger, even a larger percentage that for a roof repair or a major furnace repair, a major systems repair. So um I'm dedicated to working with you and other members uh of the council and the administration to see what we can do for that eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent. But I do want to be clear that the programs that we have that are available below eighty percent do do offer some of those um general repair items that are needed and deferred maintenance in the items that are needed for anybody that is below um that eighty percent AMI. Um, some of the programs do um, you know, prioritize the lowest of the and our most vulnerable residents, which are older adults, families with children, persons with disabilities. Uh, but we do um have programs that will serve those people for that piece. Um, the funding sources, our our primary uh funding source uh for deferred lower loan program is our CDBG funds, um and then we also receive uh capital uh investment um program from a CIP budget that helps support um repairs. One of the key things that we also see uh with our weatherization program and um lead hazard reduction program and also our rehabilitation program is that um sometimes the property itself, so you have multiple multiple different components to this with depending upon the program that you're in, where you have the income restriction, but then you also have um and the income eligibility, but you also have a property eligibility. So like for weatherization, it's not just the income, but the property itself has to qualify and meet specific guidelines that have been put forth by either uh the Department, Federal Department of Energy or or the state um uh state um empower program and other sources of funds that we use there for those kind of energy upgrades, which also there are components to that as part of the budget that cover some other health and safety items in the home, not just the weatherization funding. But we also utilize our capital budget to help close those gaps. So if there's a roof leak and that property won't qualify for we- weatherization, we'll come in to assist to um address the ru- roof leak so that then that family can get the weatherization completed and um not only have a safer um home with that repair that's been made, like a generalized roof repair, but also be able to realize um uh lower energy bills and a healthier environment with weatherization. And the same thing on the lead hazard reduction side as well. You might go in with a lead hazard reduction program, and there may be water in the basement or a roof leaking um or a major system or plumbing repair, and we're able to help assist and leverage funding to be able to get that generalized repair done and also leverage the uh the lead hazard reduction um program funding um and to move that forward. Our funding for weatherization, um we receive Federal Department of Energy funding as well as um uh state empower funding. Our funding levels have um have gone down over the last couple of years, but that doesn't mean that we that funding is still available. So for the pandemic um during COVID, that was a service. Um, because of the length of time that the um workforce has to be in the property, um that was definitely a a safety hazard at one point. So um it's not necessarily that we ran out of funding on the weatherization side. Um, it's more that we did receive a reduction in service during COVID because of the health risk. Um, but we were able to work with um the restoring um uh the city services team and get that back up and running for those interior inspections and interior work. Um, and then we also have state sources for funding for the disabilities, um uh, the disabilities low uh grant program, as well as the Maryland Home Re- Rehabilitation Program, which also covers that kind of larger spectrum of generalized repairs. And we administer that on behalf of um the state and uh utilize those dollars. So we evaluate those applications for which programs they're best suited for and uh where they can kind of get in, how we can prioritize those in those neighborhoods that we're working in and leverage all funding sources available. Because um, you know, the a lot of the programs are already in existence, um and it's a matter of additional uh funding for those programs um to really, to really um increase the work that we're doing within our communities.
So Commissioner Kennedy, I'll just say, I really do appreciate, you know, that sensitivity around the eighty to one hundred, twenty percent AMI. I think that's a that's a really critical piece, and what definitely want to uh see more around that. And then the other piece, um, you know, that I would mention again, um, you know, thinking about where some of our uh development pressures are happening in the city and where um, you know, there are there are positive uh movements. At the same time, folks may not have that liquid cash to be able to make those kinds of investments that you, as you mentioned. So as neighborhoods are 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 moving in the right direction, want to make sure that folks are able to stay. And I think that's kind of uh what the Council President was alluding to in terms of sort of the the specter gentrification in some areas. So I think we could kind of do all those things together. So I do, again, I appreciate uh you make those efforts.
Mr. President, can I just say something real quick?
Yes, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Just not to lose that thought on uh what the Commissioner, the Commissioner was going through a lot of different funding sources, and that's seems to be one of the reasons why we are asking for the the ARPA money because there's there were so many different funding sources to go through. And here we have this pot of money to really help us. That's that's what we're talking about, the use of that particular money to ki- to kind of um help because there's so many different funding sources. Here we have this one that could really help and hone in onto some main problems.
Yes. Um, I I couldn't agree with you more, Madam Vice President. Um, the one thing with Madam Vice President started talking, Commissioner, that I thought of is um can you provide to the committee, well, really to the councils, councils as a whole? Can you provide to the council um the breakdown um of all of the funding that you kind of went over? Uh, and then more importantly, the number of um unique individuals that we've been able to help over, say, like the past three years? Do you have access to that level of data?
Yes.
Yeah, i- if you could provide that to uh the committee, we'd truly appreciate it. Um, at this point, are there any other additional questions or concerns?
Yes, Mrs. President.
President.
Um, I think I heard uh Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to thank uh Commissioner Kennedy for um her work, steering her team, and just doing the kind of thorough report that um was submitted in writing and to be able to just go into such detail here in the hearing tonight. Yeah, I mean, that it the assessment of the bill reflects a lot of uh the questions that um I have had in reading it and um uh does really reveal a lot of conversation that seems to need to take place uh over this bill. Um, so I'm looking forward to uh seeing what the next steps are going to be here. I also want to just thank um Commissioner Kennedy for um uplifting some of the work that DHCD has um already done and already has kind of in place that some of which I think is under uh recognized. Um, in particular, the program uh for for uh, I forget exactly how you put it, but it for home lending, um for kind of uh marginal price homes, homes that are priced uh, you know, below the point at which banks will traditionally lend and at a point where um because of that, that sector of the housing market is just eaten up by cash buyers um who are really driving unaffordable rents in areas that should be much more affordable than they are. Um, and and then I think it's really important to recognize this um this program as one that is uh seeking to fill an a a gaping hole in the finance structure of uh housing opportunity uh in the city and that it is really um Alice, the Commissioner herself, who has been a driving force behind that uh for so many years and glad to see that uh come to fruition in the last capital, you know, it finds some funding in the last capital budget. So I I'm just uh really thankful to to get some all-around perspective on on these bills here today.
Thank you, uh, council member. I believe we also had uh Councilwoman Odette. Uh, do you, do you have a question or concern, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add to your request, if that's all right, to have that breakdown of the programs, the funding sources, the amounts that are available, how many people we've helped, and then the amounts that are available to um each each person. Um, I think that'll help us with providing us, I'm a visual person, so having the the depth and breadth of the um existing programs will be will be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question myself. This is Councilman
Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Um, first of all, I want to thank uh Commissioner Kennedy for the presentation. Um, first I want to thank uh Commissioner Kennedy for the presentation. My question is, there are a lot of concerns that I've been hearing on this uh call. My question is, we always use the words equity throughout the city. My question is, how do we address some of the issues in uh a lot of the agents, especially housing? And my question is, have your office hired an equity officer and a full staff? Because if that's not in place, we gonna still have these same conversations. Because when you talk about equity, it's got, has to be applied and not somebody that worked there that's warming up the seat. Or somebody's there and they don't have a full staff. So my question is, how is your office addressing that equity and is it fully staffed?
Uh, thanks, uh Councilman Stokes for that uh question. Um, hiring a um equity officer for the, a dedicated, full-time equity officer. For uh the agency has been a priority. Um, for me, uh, that I started that process as soon as uh Mayor Scott. Um, appointed me um as commissioner to uh get that full-time equity officer in place. And that uh job was posted and there's a um, a team, including uh members of uh. Director uh Moore's office as the chief equity officer engaged um in the uh interview panel for that position. And I, I, we're moving forward on um, on getting that full-time dedicated equity officer within the agency. That's um a key priority for me and a key priority as we look at our agency and the importance of the work that we do in our communities. And the importance of the work that we're doing across the city in our um, in our neighborhoods that um, you know, have um. Been so severely impacted um by the um racist housing policies that we've been addressing. Um, and the impacts that those have had in our communities over the year. So I will um let you know as soon as we have that uh person on board. And I am greatly looking forward uh to having that full-time dedicated equity officer um. On staff within the agency to help us uh work through all of the work that we're doing. Um, and we have been and you know, will continue to also um work with uh the equity, the chief equity officer for the city. And uh work to um, you know, in, engage and also um utilize uh chief, you know, and core principles as we do this work.
Mr. President, I just have a follow-up. Um, we've been talking about equity for over a year now. Um, and one person in the office, you're looking for one person, is absolutely not going to work. Do you have a timeline in, in, uh, not just the, the one person, but a full staff? Because again, it's, it's a little frustrating for me because we cannot address none of these issues we talked about on the phone. If we still waiting to hire somebody to address those issues, not just in, in your, in housing, but other agencies in the city. So do you have a timeline in terms of uh hiring not just one person, but a full staff? So the council at least know that we really talking about equity and you have people in place to address it. Because right now, if we still having a conversation about, we looking for somebody, we ain't got nobody. How can you address the issue of equity and housing when we still haven't hired a full staff yet? So my question is, do you have a timeline on a full staff for equity, address equity and housing?
Well, I think that um our chief equity officer has additional staff members that would be um within the agency from, you know. Members of our team, but that I look at that chief equity officer is also an extension of the work that's being done. Um, you know, by the chief um equity officer for the city. So at this time, um, we do, we have the one position um that I work to identify. And um the work that um, the work for the one position for that dedicated agency representative. And the dedicated agency equity officer that was not um in place uh previous, previously. And um that, you know, we look to the city's uh equity office and, and chief of equity to help. Um, further advance all of the work um that we're doing in equity and, and having that embedded across the city and in our agency. So at this time, we have the one position, but we are working uh closely with the chief equity officer and her office uh to. Um, have that continued level of support as well as expertise and uh work as we look to um, you know, move, move this uh effort forward.
One more follow-up, Mr. President, is, my question is, um, that particular job title. Can we have a copy? Because when you talk about equity officer, you gotta hire someone. Body that's experienced and know exactly what they doing. So is their job specs on that particular uh, uh job for that equity officer? That probably can share with the, the council as a whole?
Yes, uh, we can share that as a whole. And I know that um the job spec that we put together. Was uh built off of the job set spec for the agency um equity officer that was hired for uh DPW. And DGS and other agency um equity officers have been hired, but specifically looking at, uh was built off of the um. The job description that our fellow agencies had used in hiring their agency equity officer as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, m- Mr. President, uh had to jump off, so I will be um finishing out and chairing as we move along. Um, but first I'm.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Uh, hold on, Councilman. Um, I want to go back to the reports. Um, reports I'm looking at, the HCD reports, there's one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-two report re- that are blank. Is there explanation for that?
Um. For bill, the bill report for twenty-one dash oh one seven two?
Um, we're talking about the reports that Councilman Dorsey had basically applauded for. I'm, we're saying, we're, I'm seeing that HCD reports are, it's, the numbers are one hundred seventy-three. At thousand and one seventy-two. And they're blank.
I would have to um connect with MoGR. I know that we submitted uh bill reports for all three uh bills. Um, twenty-one dash oh seven, oh one seven two, twenty-one dash oh one seven three and twenty-one uh dash oh uh seven four. Which were all um initialed and signed and submitted. I would assume that they were submitted by PDF. So I, I, I don't know um what the issue would be is if, if um one council member was able to um. See that or, or not. So I think that um MoGR did submit um. The PDFs of the bill reports. So I'd have to check.
Those were, Madam Vice President, I did, I was able to print them out from the bill file, so um.
Yeah, I got them as well.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna um check and review. Um.
But yes, Madam Vice President, I found them on Legisstar in the bill file.
Okay. So um, Commissioner, could you go ahead and start with the seniors bill?
Yes, um, so in uh reference to uh Council Bill twenty-one dash uh zero one seven four. The Baltimore City uh Seniors uh Homeowner uh Grant Program. Um, you know, we want to acknowledge that, you know, reverse mortgages have been disproportionately marketed um to lower income African Americans in urban cities. Not just in Baltimore, but across the country, um in places like uh Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, St. Louis, uh Detroit. Uh, we recognize too that th- these mortgages are sold utilizing uh what we would uh typically call as uh pressure tactics. And also that prey upon um our older adults and, and do not provide the older adults with a clear understanding. Of the terms of uh those loan products. Um, and uh what is required under, um, you know, what is required under, under a reverse mortgage. Um, and such common terms in, you know, one of the most common too is uh the need to have um, you know, homeowner's insurance. Uh, to be paid um during that time, um as well as, you know, property taxes to be paid at that time. And as well as components of that reverse mortgage where things such as, you know, property taxes or um. Or homeowner's insurance are not paid, that the mortgage company can um start to undertake foreclosure proceedings on those uh reverse mortgages. Um, typically a reverse mortgage loan uh payment is not, does not become due. So full payment of that loan uh would not become due to the borrower until um, to the lender, until that borrower uh would uh move out. Or that borrower sells the property, or they pass away, or they do not maintain the property. They do not maintain um their homeowner's insurance, or they do not uh pay uh their tax bill. Um, or if they fail to follow uh those uh loan guidelines. And so that we know that the full amount of the loan of that reverse mortgage becomes due when one of those events is triggered. Um, and the lender will start proceedings, um, you know, to obtain what is due and payable on that mortgage. Um, and a lot of times um that borrower, and we recognize and having worked with a number of different residents across the city. Um, that a lot of times uh that borrower uh or the heir of the property cannot pay back the loan. Uh, which, you know, is triggered um because foreclosure proceedings, um actually, when a, when a person passes away. Um, that lender actually starts foreclosure proceedings at that time um to help uh. To take possession of the property after the person uh passes away. They do that through a, a foreclosure proceeding, especially if um, you know, estate planning and so forth has not been in place. And the heirs typically have to come up with whatever the loan balance is or, you know, ninety-five percent of the appraised value at that time. Um, we have provided in the bill report um some reverse mortgage uh data um that we've looked at um in terms of different components of. Um, reverse mortgages, some of those um initial uh principal limits. We've looked at some of those principal limits uh with breakdowns also um. Um, by uh race and provided that. Um, you know, we do not currently offer a grant. Um, specific to um someone that is at risk of loss of their home to a reverse mortgage. We can work with and have worked with residents, um depending upon which funding source we're utilizing. Uh, to assist with a resident that has a reverse mortgage that does need to make a re- a necessary repair uh to that property. Um, we may have also assisted um with a resident to make that repair. If, if they did not have homeowner's insurance, to try to assist them um in obtaining homeowner's insurance, which um can sometimes be, be difficult. Um, and you know, we recognize that um, you know, those programs can help. Uh, and those repair programs can help overall lessen some of those financial burdens. But at this time, uh we do not offer something um that is specific to help uh with some of those uh fees and et cetera. That are uh associated um, you know, with a revert, uh with a uh reverse uh mortgage. And um, you know, one of the pieces that we see as well is key to this is the work um that, you know, DHCD does. With Maryland Volunteer Legal Services and the State of Maryland and the My Home, My Deed, My Legacy. Um, initiative to help homeowners uh make changes to their estate planning. Um, and work on um outreach and education on the um, you know, pitfalls associated. Uh, with reverse mortgages, what that means uh for um their legacy, for, for their heirs, uh for generational wealth creation. Um, and how to appropriately uh plan for that. We do have some um operational and fiscal concerns just regarding implementation of the proposed legislation. Um, you know, there's some of the eligibility uh requirements uh that are laid forth. Um, you know, if they're sixty-two years of older, um, you know, providing documentation that they are able to pay. Or secure other grants to pay any costs that would exceed the um maximum loan amount. Um, you know, we just had some questions about um how principal residence is defined. Um, and um, you know, it should be amended to clarify that it's for a homeowner and homeowner occupied properties. Um, you know, we feel as written, once again, that proof of residence could be open to tenants. Um, and we wouldn't want uh that to be the case. Um, we also are looking at how uh the funds would be prioritized um at or below the sixty percent of um area median income. We, you know, typically look at residents thirty percent and below AMI um or persons with disabilities as a key uh prioritization. But we feel that instead of legislatively, that we could look at developing those um with, through rules and regu- regulations to most effectively carry out. Um, the legislation. Um, it calls, you know, to provide the funding to eligible residents who are vulnerable to the loss of their home due to a reverse mortgage. Um, you know, and the grant up to five thousand dollars um and so forth. But we just had some concerns on the staffing um levels and additional staff members and cost of those staff members that would be needed. Um, and, and also um uh software costs associated with uh that program. Um, in needing the um, you know, grants, the. Residents, I mean, the, the staff members to evaluate and review the residents and homeowners' applications and to put this through. Um, it's unsure how the legislation uh would be funded. So barring a funding source, at this time, we do not have the financial capacity um to im- implement the program. Um, and it has been suggested um that it could designate funds under ARPA. But at this time, we're unclear um if those funds could be used for the purposes outlined um in this program um as well. And um, you know, I'd want to highlight a couple of key things that um, you know, DHCD is an active participant. In the Baltimore City Tax Sale Work Group, uh which is, you know, charged with studying and making recommendations. On improving uh the Baltimore City Tax Sale uh process. And we feel that by helping residents uh be able to afford uh property taxes and creating property tax payment plans and other tools. Um, with avoiding tax sale, we would also help um homeowners avoid, avoid reverse mortgage foreclosure. So one of the issues is how can we best help um residents avoid uh foreclosure proceedings? Through um some of those triggering factors that I mentioned above, such as um tax, you know, issues with tax sale or not paying property taxes. Or um homeowner's insurance and, and letting homeowner's insurance lapse. Or how to help um be able to help uh heirs to properties, you know, be able to obtain the necessary. Uh mortgages and funding uh to be able to purchase the property um. And avoid uh foreclosure at, at that point. So um, and, and there are times when that foreclosure is also triggered. Um, you know, through the um passing of a resident as well. And then if we're trying to pay the fees associated, so I think it would also be a definition or better defining of uh what fees are qualifying. And if we're talking about assisting in a fee being directly associated with the mortgage company and the foreclosure. Or what is necessary, or if there is a potential to um, you know, look at the other components of, you know, property taxes. Or homeowner's insurance that would help that resident be able to um get out of that uh reverse mortgage foreclosure. And be able to maintain um, you know, residents in their home. So um, you know, keeping low-income homeowners and legacy residents is a key strategy for us. It's a key strategy for preserving affordable housing in our city. Um, and we support the intent. However, um, you know, we do have some questions um about how to go about implementation, the funding for implementation. And um also wanting to see that we try to come up with a way uh to educate and support. And address the, some of the key root causes that result in a reverse mortgage foreclosure. Um, and you know, we're definitely committed to seeking additional funding to retain um those most important and valuable. Long-term residents of the city in any way that we can and help um prevent as uh best as possible. Any older adults um that are vulnerable to the loss of their home or uh vulnerable to the pitfalls of uh reverse mortgages. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Uh, before I, we respond to that, your statement, I just want to go back to the reports again and I just kind of did a investigation. Um, so this is for um the Legislative Office, Nina and Natasha. Um, it looks like you sent the reports to Natwana but didn't include the council president's staff, um Nikki and uh Aaron and the key people. Um, so I just uh would like to say, can you please make sure you keep them up to date with all reports? Because evidently, an update was get, uh, set of reports were given, but were not given to them. So we need to um make sure that they are, you know, getting
Vice President Middleton.
As you also sent in them to, to us, the Yeah, um, yeah, you may.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton. I apologize, um, when council services reached out
Yes, you may.
Thank you, yeah, when council services reached out to note the error that the two reports hadn't come through, I didn't realize that they had only replied to me directly and it wasn't a reply also. That is my error, I apologize for that, but it was not purposeful.
Um, I, I just kind of lost you, so I didn't hear, but the, I would, um time, please?
Uh, Madam Vice President, your connection is going in and out, we, we can't really hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No, ma'am.
It, it's kind of, it's going in and out, so we can hear you, we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Councilmember, remember, may send her a message in the chat.
Madam Vice President, we, your, it's, it's a spotty connection.
Vice President Middleton, um, everyone is having some technical difficulties, so uh we will continue on uh as we go to the next agencies if you, Commissioner Kennedy, are done giving your report on the seniors grants bill.
Yes, uh, I, we're concluded unless there's any other questions from any council members.
Can you hear me now? I bet. Yeah. Hello?
Yes, Vice President Middleton, we can hear you. Madam Vice President, if you're talking, we can't hear you. We can go ahead and move on to Department of Finance while we wait for Vice President Middleton's technical difficulties to work out. Um, and thank you again, Commissioner Kennedy.
Hi, good evening, this is uh Bob Sennemy, Budget Director from the Department of Finance. Is it okay for me to start for my testimony?
Yes, please, and thank you.
Okay, okay, well, go ahead. So thank you, I'll be um very brief and try to just summarize our comments in just, just a few minutes. So um, when we looked at these bills, we worked with H C D first to figure out um what were just the operational costs of, of managing these uh three programs, the urban homesteading, uh the home repairs grant and the uh senior repairs grant program. And, you know, what we found is that each of them, you know, have different criteria and rules and eligibility, so we feel like there would be, we, we'd need to be staffed for each of those programs. And as um Director Kennedy alluded to uh on the cost, we estimate an annual cost of seven hundred ninety-one thousand dollars uh for the urban homesteading program, uh seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for the home repairs grant program, and seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the senior repairs uh grant program. So that's a total of about two-point-three million dollars uh on an annual basis uh just to manage applications and to, and to run the programs. Um, you know, each of those, like I said, are distinct programs, there could be some overlap in, you know, either management or staff when we get more into it, but to be conservative and safe, we felt like um, you know, we should be budgeting that full amount for, for each of those programs, again, total of two-point-three million in our estimate. Um, in terms of the, the grant programs themselves, so um the way we estimated the cost for this is we first looked at the eligible properties, again, that, that um Director Kennedy alluded to of about three hundred and fifteen uh that are eligible. We assume that the maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars uh would be spent uh for each of those properties, that's seven-point-eight million dollars. Uh, and then we assume that there would be another six hundred properties uh eligible uh also for smaller-scale repairs of about ten thousand dollars each. And so uh that would be six million dollars. So if you add those two up, we're talking uh thirteen-point-eight million dollars of grant funds required to, to run these programs uh in addition to the two-point-three million dollar operational cost on an annual basis. That's the minimum uh just for uh the home repairs grant program. Uh, the senior repairs program, we, we did not provide an estimate, we, we did not have, we felt great numbers on how many reverse mortgages were out there and how many folks would be eligible for that program. But at a minimum, we're talking about, again, two-point-three million dollars operational cost uh and, you know, potentially thirteen-point-eight million dollars uh plus uh for the grant repair programs. Um, you know, in terms of other issues, I would just echo a couple of the things that Director Kennedy said about concerns from, from finance. Um, first is, you know, some of the overlap with other H C D programs where we get federal and state uh ti- at times resources to pay for those programs, either grant or loan programs. Um, Director mentioned it's not fully aligned with our uh impact investment strategy. Um, we also have concerns about the timeline, the, the, the legislation has a start-up date uh that's thirty days after implementation, which is, which we think is very short for a program of this nature. Uh, and also, I'll, I'll defer, you know, I know Shamaya Kearney's on the phone uh as well about ARPA funding, I think the assumption is this could be paid for with ARPA funding, but I, I don't think we're ready to commit to that uh certainly at this point yet. Um, the obvious issue here when we have something of this cost is, is where, how do we pay for that? And, you know, the general fund is not in the position to absorb a program of this magnitude, uh given, again, the, the significant challenges we're facing recovering from the pandemic uh and dealing with additional uh mandated education spending that we, I've talked about with the council many times uh that begins in fiscal twenty-three and will continue to grow over the next uh eight-year period. Uh, so based on uh our analysis of the cost of this program and, and not being able to, to commit to ARPA funding, uh finance was opposed to the legislation. Uh, and I'm happy to take any questions uh from council members now, or if you want to hear the other uh bill responses, come back to us later. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Senator. Oh, oh, Council, Council Vice President.
Go, go, look like I'm back on. Um, thank you, Councilman Bullock, for backup, I don't know how long it's gonna stay, it's uh, it's been that kind of a day. Um, I guess we'll stop here, are there any questions from uh any of my colleagues? And hearing.
Council Vice President, I, I did have one question, just uh to jump back on what Director Sennemy just mentioned, um, as, as far as ARPA funds, um, you know, definitely understand, you know, uh part of what you're getting at. Uh, but what I will say is I think there's been some expectation amongst folks in the city that, you know, you have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to, to, um, you know, infuse a resource in the areas that haven't gotten them. So can you, can I talk about how you want to be fiscally conservative, but at the same time, uh try to make investments in areas that need them? And I think you're muted.
Sorry, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so I think we, we, we are understanding and, and are, are, I think, working towards the same goal, that we want these investments uh that we make out of ARPA to be, you know, transformative, that they can be. Um, I'm being conservative on the operational cost side and, you know, the program cost side, if, if, if this is not something that we can pay for uh out of ARPA ultimately, again, because of those additional costs that we'll be facing in fiscal twenty-three and beyond. I mean, these are significant costs, we've been warning about these for many years, we've been on the record multiple times saying, you know, if we have these additional mandated education costs, we're gonna have no room for any other, um, you know, very little room for any other investments for other programs. So um I would defer to Shamaya, if she's on, just about the eligibility and, and kind of where we stand on that front, but, you know, certainly a program of this size is, is something enormous that we wouldn't be able to bear in the, in the general fund.
Uh, Shamaya, are you on? Did you want to comment?
I am on, um, I was going to speak to eligibility uh in reference to my reports, so did we want to wait until I actually go through each bill report that I have, or you wanted me to respond to that now?
Uh, you can go ahead and respond to that now, thank you.
Sure. Uh, so in general, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act is a very favorable and does have a lot of information regarding uh housing. Uh, there are uh components of the bill, or of the law, rather, that speak to the use of funds for housing. Um, I think there are some general concerns, and again, I'll talk through that uh when I give my bill reports um about some of the program design, but I think in general, um, some of the premises that are put forth in the bills are eligible under ARPA.
Councilman Bullock, uh, is that any further questions on that one?
No, that's it for now, but thank you very much.
Okay. All right, um, Bob, did you want to go ahead and finish?
Uh, I didn't have anything else, that's a summary of our three uh bill reports, there's a little bit more detail on the positions and the calculations uh in the actual bill reports, but that's, that's it in a nutshell, so wanted to keep it kind of brief and, and uh, uh, and high level as best I could.
Okay, thank you. Um, who's up next? Nikki?
Did Director um Sennemy want to provide any other reports for the additional bills, or um was that all he wanted to provide?
He's, it sounded like, did you have more to provide?
No, we, no, we, we had, we have three distinct bill reports for each of the bills, but like I said, we have a, there's an operational cost for uh all three bills for the urban homesteading program, the home repairs and the senior repairs program uh that collectively add to two-point-three million dollars. And then again, the, 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 the big cost driver is the home repairs grant program, which is uh the estimate I, I shared earlier of about thirteen-point-eight million dollars. So that's all in the bill reports uh collectively, so um, so from a financial perspective, I'm sorry, from a financial perspective, that's the sum uh of our analysis for all three of, of the bills.
Okay, did we want to hear from the um ARPA director? Cause I think it, you had more, you wanted to um talk about information you had with the three bills?
Sure, I'm happy to go now, if, if that's
Yeah.
Uh, the will of the council, great.
Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, council members, again, I'm Shamaya Kearney, I'm the Chief Recovery Officer in the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. Um, I'll keep my comments brief this evening, but we'll summarize my comments uh for each bill, starting with Council Bill twenty-one zero-one-seven-two, the Baltimore City Legacy Residence Urban Homesteading Program. So again, as I mentioned in some of my earlier comments, uh in general, uh ARPA emphasizes the disproportionate negative impacts of the COVID-nineteen public health pandemic on low-income communities and people of color, um and as such, generally encourages cities to use ARPA funding uh to prioritize those communities, uh which would also include places like uh qualified census tracts. Uh, and there are some median income uh requirements that are aligned with that, that I won't go into too, too deeply and not get too technical. Uh, but in general, uh, I think that there are a couple of things that I'd want to uh identify and for the council to consider with this bill. Um, in order to fully assess the eligibility of the program, uh I think our office would need more detailed information about what the, what cost the city would incur for the program uh and how the funds would be utilized. Uh, there are some other considerations that we should think about regarding the administrative costs that would be associated with implementing a program. Um, assuming that the city would document and have the ability to document um program targets for the populations. Um, there are some definitions in the law about who is uh impacted and then disproportionately impacted, so we'd have to be able to document that anyone who is a recipient or beneficiary of this program meets that criteria. Uh, in addition, uh, there is a clause in the law that if multiple applications were received for the same property, that priority must be given to an applicant who is a, a participant in the U S HUD Housing Choice Voucher Program. So I think we'd also need to consider um if there would be a challenge with prioritization of those participants and if that would uh constitute a duplication of benefits. Uh, in addition, the program design relies on the city uh to issue grants, but potentially issue loans. Um, and so there are some concerns about loans, uh particularly because loan funds means that uh the, the beneficiary would have to repay the city for any loan funds that were distributed. Uh, of course, as you well know, we have deadlines for when ARPA funds would have to be expended, they have to be awarded by the end of calendar year twenty-four, and they have to be uh spent by the end of calendar year twenty-six. So in a loan program where we're receiving repayments, it's unclear whether we would be able to expend all of those funds uh by the end of calendar year twenty-six. Uh, in addition, uh, the, the tracking and reporting uh for loans is also a challenge that I think we may have, um, and that we might want to consider um when finalizing language for this bill. Um, and because if we are talking about a loan program, there's a higher risk uh for loan financing, uh the structure and, and relying on participants to repay uh by the deadlines, as I mentioned before. Uh, in addition to that, uh, the proposed bill includes a clause that the department can grant a participant a two-year program extension um of the lease and continue the program if certain stipulations are met. Um, again, I flag that as a concern for the timelines that are associated with ARPA funds to be both awarded and expended. Uh, and then lastly, there may be other uh financial resources that are available that might be better suited for this program than ARPA. Uh, one more appropriate source could be uh the home program, which can be used for assistance to home buyers for low and very low-income families. Uh, so um, the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs hasn't taken a position on the legislation, but does defer to the agency that's tasked with administering the program, and that's the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, I'll move on to summarize comments for Council Bill twenty-one zero-one-seven-three, Baltimore City Home Grant Repairs Program. Uh, in general, the Office of Recovery Programs wants to emphasize that the need uh for any funding allocated from ARPA funds um are used to cover costs that are incurred, again, by the recipient between March third, twenty-twenty-one and December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And again, that the funds must be expended by the end of calendar year twenty-six. Uh, in general, some of the considerations for this bill are that uh we would have to clearly define the intentions and plans on how we would assess households or populations that experience a negative public health or economic impact due to the pandemic. Again, as I noted in the previous bill, that there are definitions in the law that identify impacted and disproportionately impacted, so we'd have to ensure that beneficiaries um meet that criteria. Uh, in addition, the bill does, as proposed, currently does not speak to the ability to recruit grant funds um if it's not used for its intended purpose. In addition, the bill also does not speak to the use of grant funds within a specified timeframe, again, noting um the deadlines for award and expending those funds. Uh, also, the administrative burden on city agencies for administering the program, and also that there may, may be other appropriate funding streams uh for this program, such as C D B G, C V cares, or um ARPA home funds may be more appropriate sources. Uh, moving on to summarize comments for Council Bill twenty-one zero-one-seven-four, Baltimore City Senior Homeowner Grants Program. Uh, in general, some of the considerations here, um are that we need to define the intention and plan on, again, how we assess individuals that have experienced negative economic impacts per the law, uh, the administrative burden on city agencies. Uh, the administrative burden on city agencies. Uh, there may be other federal funding streams available here as well. The ARPA Homeowner Assistance Fund could be used. And in addition, uh, considering the Maryland ARPA Homeowner Assistance Fund may also be a more appropriate source of funding, um, contingent, again, on program design. Um, and then lastly, as we, as mentioned in the last, uh, comments for the last bill, um, are that funds must be used for costs that were incurred on or after March 3rd, 2021. And again, um, awarding and expending by the deadline. Uh, those are all the comments that I have on our three bills.
Thank you, Director Kearney. Um, does, any of my colleagues have any, uh, questions or comments for Director Kearney? Hearing none, we'll move on to, um, thank you, Director, for all of that, uh, added information, so we can continue to work and improve. Um, is someone here from the Mayor's Office of Children and Families?
Yes, ma'am, I am here.
It, yes, hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good. You're on.
Awesome, thank you. So, good evening, members of the council. My name is Faith Leach, and I'm the Deputy Mayor, uh, for Equity Health and Human Services. And I'm also the interim Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. I will keep my remarks tonight very brief. Uh, while the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success does not currently support or provide specialized programs or services that would fall under the Baltimore City Legacy Residents Urban Homesteading Program, the Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program, or the Baltimore City Senior Homeowners Grant Program, the agency does, however, currently support assistance programs that positively impact the lives of children and families across Baltimore, such as the water, energy, and rental assistance programs. Uh, due to the experience and expertise that MOCFS has in supporting the above-mentioned assistance program, uh, programs, the office opposes this legislation due to the operational burden, uh, that would be incurred with added resources and staffing needs to assist with implementation. While MOCFS would not be responsible for implementation, and therefore our own resources would not be affected, the office is highly knowledgeable in the commitment of staff, time, and resources needed to support successful assistance programs. MOCFS does not believe the legislation as written allows for the Department of Housing and Community Development to properly implement such a program without incurring additional, uh, duties, which requires significant increases in resources. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success thanks the Committee of the Whole for the opportunity to respond to Council Bills 21-0172, 21-0173, and 21-0174. And we stand ready to answer any questions the committee might have.
I yield to, uh, account any, and my colleagues, do you have any comments or questions to Faith? Moving on, let's go ahead to public, uh, testimony.
Uh, Madam Chair, I don't think we heard from the Law Department on this.
Okay, um, uh, Victor, are you representing tonight for the Law Department?
Madam, Madam Chair, I, I'm going to be talking about 172, and Elena DePietro can talk to 173 and 174, if that's okay.
Yes.
I will have my, I'll try to make my comments as brief as possible. Uh, uh, what we say in our bill report is that you have constitutional, as well as charter, problems in the bill. It's a little easier to, to, uh, to treat the charter problems, but the, treating the constitutional problems will be a challenge. So let me explain, you have two constitutional problems here. Uh, they arise from the bill's participation requirement. Uh, in the bill, there's a, a situation where you are eligible if you are, uh, a legacy resident. And that establishes when you are 15, you've, you've been a resident of the city of Baltimore for 15 years. There's another requirement that says that you have to be a, uh, a resident of a designated neighbor for another 10 years. And if you meet those requirements, you are eligible to receive the benefits of this program. Uh, so ultimately, what we're doing in the bill is discriminating against, uh, short-term, uh, residents versus long-term residents. So that raises two constitutional issues. The first one is called, uh, uh, is an equal protection clause problem under the Constitution. And in order to pass an equal protection, uh, clause, uh, problem, you have to have a rational basis. Uh, but the problem in this bill is that your recitals basically say you are trying to, you're trying to right, uh, a discriminatory wrong, uh, trying to help people who have been discriminated against housing. But whether you have, uh, been discriminated in housing, whether you've been a 15-year resident or a one-year resident, you are still discriminated against, and the need is the same, whether it's you're a 15-year resident or a one-year resident. So the rational basis here for having a 15-year, uh, residency requirement or a 10-year requirement, uh, is undermined by that fact, by the, once again, by the recitals in your bill, which, uh, go into a, a, a variety of types of discrimination, all relating to housing. That's the equal protection argument problem. Then we have a privileges and immunities clause problem. And that says the Supreme Court holds that durational residency requirements, as you have in this bill. In other words, you have to be a resident so long in the city in order to qualify for a benefit. And Supreme Court says that interferes with the right of newly arrived residents or citizens to have the same privileges as those who have been here for a longer period of time. So in effect, when you're making different classes of residents, of Baltimore City residents, uh, we have a privileges and immunity clause problem. And the Supreme Court says, well, if you, if you, in order to escape that problem, you have to have a very compelling reason to do that. But once again, when we look at the reasons that are outlined in the bill, it says that you're trying to right a discriminatory wrong. But those who have suffered an injustice are the same, whether you've done, whether you've been around for 15 years or you've been around for one or two years. So that's the constitutional problem, uh, that plagues this bill at the moment. The charter problems, as I say, are a little easier to correct than that one. The charter problem is that you really have, the city council doesn't really have power, under Article 2 of the Maryland, of our city charter, to establish the lease rates or the sale prices of property, as this bill does. And you also don't have the ability to determine when a sale occurs, uh, under this particular provision that, uh, that this bill sort of raises. So as I said, I think we can work around, uh, a drafting issue. We can probably work around some of the charter problems. I've talked to, uh, we've talked to, uh, the president's staff about how we might be able to work around the constitutional problems. Uh, but, uh, from my view, it's going to be difficult to do, but maybe not impossible. Uh, that's my, that's my testimony on 172, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions from colleagues? Thank you, Victor, for that, um, important information. Uh, now we'll move on to real estate.
Um, good morning, sorry, long day. Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Vice President and members of the committee. Uh, for the record, I'm Casey Keller, the Director of Communication for the Office of the Comptroller. Uh, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Department of Real Estate. Um, we submitted generally the same, uh, report with comments for, um, 21-0172, 21-0173, and 21-0174. Um, and by this time, we're not taking a stance on the legislation. Um, I wanted to emphasize a few points, um, and also, um, that Commissioner Kennedy brought up about, um, about real estate review. Um, right now, the Department of Real Estate, along with DHD and many of the agencies on this call, are working together to, um, assess all the, um, fields of real estate, um, that the city works in. Uh, we should have some public findings to share within 60 days, uh, that will definitely affect, um, this legislation, um, and especially how we serve the public. Um, I also want to give some background. Um, as many of you know, our department has approximately 1,200 legacy lots. The city used to have a policy of, uh, buying old tax sale lots. Um, these lots aren't really anything to write home about, they're scraps of land. Um, one before the Ways and Means Committee right now is about 130 square feet. Um, all these lots generally go to places. They either go to a developer that's trying to piece together a package, uh, to build something, or they're going to a, um, a neighbor that wants to buy the plot next to them, uh, to expand their property. Um, we, these are generally, um, we sell about, um, 10 to 20 a month. Um, but we do come into a few more, um, as the year goes on. The second, um, property, uh, program, sorry, that I wanted to bring up to everyone is that the Department of Real Estate handles a vendor's lien program. Uh, the purpose of the vendor's lien program is to eliminate blight and repair, return a property to tax sale. So when a, when, after the tax sale process, the Department of Real Estate ends up with all the properties, um, that don't sell at the tax sale auction in May. Um, we handle these tax sales and make them available to investors, to homeowners, to whoever. Um, by making sure we can assess these, I'm sorry, losing my voice as we're talking. Making sure that we can assess these, um, sell these, and, uh, negotiate a reduction in liens on certain properties with tax sale certificates. Um, that is the analysis we wanted to give. It is all in our bill reports, um, and I can take any questions, but sorry, I'm losing my voice.
Uh, believe me, I understand. Um, and I just, first of all, want to commend you for not taking a stand, but continually working together as we, uh, continue to have these formats as a, uh, committee, uh, as a whole. It's, um, just gives a sense of encouragement when we're still, and all of these bills are still a, a, a piece of work in action and not just outright opposing. Um, does, do my colleagues have any questions for KC at this time? And, um, hearing none, are there any other agencies that I might have missed before we move on to public testimony?
Madam Chair, this is Elena DePietro from the Law Department.
Oh, yes, Elena, I forgot you were for the other two, the other two bills.
Oh, yep, that would be.
You're on.
Would you like me to quickly go over our reports?
Yes, please.
Will do. All right, so, City Council Bill 173 was the, um, Home Repairs Grant Program. And, um, actually, we had a very similar, um, constitutional issues with this bill that we, um, as Victor explained for his bill. Um, there was equal protection and privilege and immunities issue. Um, whenever there's a durational residency requirement, as is in these bills, um, there is a, the strict scrutiny analysis is, is, uh, utilized by, and there must be a compelling governmental interest to justify the, um, the discrimination against people who have not been living there as long as others. Um, in this case, it would be difficult to justify, um, a compelling interest when there, there may be just as much need for the, um, repair grant for someone who's been there, you know, just a one or two years, as there is for someone who had been there, uh, 10 or 15 years. And if the purpose is to improve the, the, um, housing stock in the neighborhood, then, you know, it would benefit everybody to not require the durational requirement, um, and let, you know, all residents be able to take advantage and, 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 uh, improve their properties. So that was one, the, one problem with this bill. The other, um, issue was, uh, there was just some, like, uh, wording issues in, in Section 66. I thought it should be clarified how, how the, um, factors are prioritized. Um, that would just be a matter of tweaking the language. Um, so I think there's, there's a way to fix this bill if we just, um, you know, tweak the residency part of it, um, and, um, see, see if we can get it within the constitutional parameters. I think we can. The, the next bill, 174, is the Baltimore City Human, um, Senior Homeowners Grant Program. Um, my colleague actually drafted the report on this one, but I'm going to report on it for her. Um, she had a couple of issues with the bill. Um, one is related to the MPIA. The bill requires that certain government information be kept by the government, um, about people that apply for the, the program. Um, and if it's not necessary to keep that information for the accomplishment of the purpose of the bill, then the Maryland MPIA law would, would prevent the government from, from keeping that, or prohibit the government from keeping that information on file. So there's really no, some of the information that's requested here arguably is not really necessary, like the number of family members living in the house, or the sources of income of those, of, of the residents of the house or the home. So we would be happy to work with, um, sponsors to come up with, uh, you know, to, to remove those parts that are, would create a problem for the MPIA. Um, there's another section of this bill that requests information concerning the title of the home, um, which wouldn't, um, capture information about those who have, might have a life estate in the house, in the home, who, who would be responsible for paying taxes on the home, even though they weren't, um, they weren't on the title. So it was the Law Department's opinion that this should be removed from the bill. And that is the, um, the conclusion of the Law Department's two reports on those bills.
Thank you, um, Elena. Um, all of this information is well noted as we move on
Certainly.
with, uh, creating amendments. And, uh, as I was looking through attendees, I know a number of attendees are staff from either the agencies or, um, council members. Um, but we're going to go ahead and see, to make, to make sure we got everyone. We'll go ahead on to public testimony.
Madam Vice President, this is Larry Green. What I will do is announce that, um, I will call your name, and then you will, uh, and unmute, unmute you, and then you can speak. And if you have a, um, comment, uh, testimony, um, use the, um, raise hand feature, please, and I'll recognize you.
Going once, going twice?
Oh, there's a hand.
All right.
There's a hand.
Okay, there's two. We'll start with Cynthia Gross. Thank you, Mr. Green. Cynthia Gross, you're on.
Yes, thank you. So I'm here tonight, um, I've been listening. And I was at the first session that was held that was public. And, um, I want to just say that I am this person that the council president is talking about. I purchased my house through the Biggest to Value Program, and I had to find my own financing, which was modeled off the 203K, because no one would loan to me to purchase a home in my neighborhood to rehab it in the condition that it was in. Um, that was a horrible experience. I would not wish that on anyone. There were no, uh, real, uh, safety nets for me dealing with private lenders. Um, so when this bill purports to put people in that circle or in that process, it's problematic. The only saving grace that I had through my time under, uh, the Biggest to Value Program was HCD. Um, allowing them the flexibility to help extend my contracts and working through all the issues I had with the lender and the contractor and the permits and timing out. Um, so when I see something that, uh, creates, um, timelines as restrictive as this, that bill on the homesteading, it worries me, because nothing in construction goes well or timely. And being someone who just entered into that phase, because I wanted a house in a community that I serve, and not knowing a lot and having to find my own financing, it can cause problems. And I think there needs to be some deference to HCD in timelines. And hearing that there is an issue with maybe ARPA funds and timelines, I think that needs to be rethought. Um, also, just as a resident, um, and I may get in trouble for this, but what I'm hearing is a lot of defending of what's written and not necessarily, uh, a need or desire to maybe make the project or pro, program better for people who actually work it, need it, and are going to go through it, through with it. So, um, just as a resident, as a voting resident, I would hope that the I would hope that the city council would do a lot more listening as opposed to defending what was written and work to make some changes. And then lastly, as a community association president, I have successfully written a couple of grants, even though very small, to aid our community, to give them funds that are basically unrestricted to do repairs in their neighborhood. Now, remind you, I bought my house in 2012 through the Biggest Value Program and could not find anyone to lend me $60,000. The house in my same block just last week, month, sold for $311,000. So I am, and my community is that community that has been gentrified, has been washed out, that is under attack. So, and people like me are those who need a real program that is going to save them on all aspects. So again, I just wish, I hope the city council does more listening and works collaboratively as opposed to defending what has been written. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. Your comments are definitely noted. And this is also a public hearing, just like the one before. So, and this is recorded. So your information is definitely very important. The next, then there's one more hand raised, and that's Zachary Leacock?
Leacock.
Leacock?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, sir. You're on.
Hello, everybody. I'm speaking basically as a representative, a member of the Homes Organization. We've actually, you know, spoken with Ms. Kennedy. And we've, you know, taken part in previous hearings for the city council for our proposal for the 21st Century Dollar House Dollar Lot Program. And listening through to the proposed bill and, you know, some of Ms. Kennedy's comments and other comments as well about the bill, it seems like, you know, there have been various concerns raised. And, you know, the thing that really just stuck out to me is that our organization has already put together a plan, which is a bit more, I guess, comprehensive than, you know, what has been presented in regards to Bill 172. Not only does it provide, you know, the houses for a dollar, you know, a source for funding, you know, pretty much it has, you know, incentive for people to buy these. It also has a mentorship program to combat some other systemic issues in the community. So, you know, working with a pool of contractors and, you know, we'll be able to actually bring on people as apprentices to kind of give them an alternative to, you know, other things that they're doing, basically giving employment and skills to, to people as they build these houses, either from the ground up if it's a lot or doing the repairs, you know, for a vacant. So, and many of you here in this meeting have the, the SOP, you know, written up by our, our, our organization's leader, Tyrone Bost. And, you know, it just, we've been working on this for a number of years to kind of get it pushed through. And the, the bill that's been presented is a bit watered down compared to the plan that we already, you know, have put together, put in place. And I understand that there have been some obstacles. You know, we've spoken about funding. You know, we've gone back and forth about the 1% interest rate. But basically, our plan is based on the program that already worked. It's no different. And it worked before, it'll work again. So I'm not sure, you know, why we need to have a different separate proposal that was put forth, I think by Mr. Mosby, that, you know, from my understanding of the bill, the money that would be offered, at least from the city, isn't even enough to cover any type of renovation or, you know, building from the ground up. So it's like, where is that money going to come from? And are the people who are getting these houses and applying for these loans, are they going to even be able to, you know, the, the type of people that we're targeting, especially when you talk about equity, are they going to be able to come up with the other portion, you know, of that money? So, you know, those are just some of the concerns that I have with the bill. Like I said, we already have a program, you know, put in place. And, you know, we would like that to be acknowledged. We've offered to work with, you know, the city on this bill. We've been promised several lots, you know, several whole blocks because this actually has.
Wrap it up. Mr. Leacock, could you kind of closing remarks, please?
Oh, absolutely, I'm sure. You know, we've been offered several, you know, blocks because, you know, this program has to be done in blocks in order to, in order to revitalize an entire neighborhood. So, you know, we just, we just want to be heard. And we want our, our proven methodology for our program to be able to be, you know, pushed through and, you know, given the attention that has been promised so many times before. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments and concerns. Mr. Green, do we have any more? I just saw.
No. Let me see, do I see any?
Someone went up and then it disappeared. There is Tyrone Bost. B O S T. Appeared and then it disappeared. Mr. Bost, are you there?
His hands is raised, Vice President. I'll, I'm leaving.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please, two minutes.
Okay, be quiet. Don't take that long. Okay, this is Reverend Sue, the, as, I'm, I'm, by the way, my name is Lieutenant Colonel, retired Tyrone Bost. I'm president of Homes, I'm ownership opportunity administration for economic success. And our concern is that the people aren't being listened to. Okay, the, the bill that went, that Mr. Leacock just discussed, went to City Hall with 1,000 seizures from the citizens. Okay? And I've had several talks with different community organizations and different, uh, uh, community meetings. I attended one last night where people were wondering what's going on with this new bill. Our concern is that the new bill is conflating what we have provided, which our program, if implemented, will, will provide for 1% interest loans, affordable mortgages, okay? It's going to provide for, uh, houses built at the low market rates by minority contract, approved minority contracts, okay? It's going, it's going to, a lot of things you were discussing. It has, it doesn't have any charter or constitutional challenges to it. And we, again, we worked on this for three years. It provides for jobs and jobs training for a lot of our people caught up in the criminal justice system and give them an alternative. We have a judge, Judge Pastore, District Judge, District Court Judge Pastore, who's associated with this program. She wants to send people to jobs and jobs training. She has a 6% recidivism rate in that program that she has. It works. She hasn't done enough of it because she doesn't have enough place to send people to because of the large unemployment in our neighborhoods due to the criminal records, okay? And people give up and that ain't counted anymore. All right, so we think we got 3% unemployment rate, Baltimore City, when indeed people have given up because they're tired, people turn them down because they have criminal records. And so we think that people are lazy when they're not, when they just can't get jobs because of the criminal records we, we put on them with this, you know, war on drugs and these other things that, that befell us. It, so it provides the second chances for, for our, our youth. And it allows the homeowner to get, oh, it allows the taxpayer to get all their money back with interest. So Mr., the director of CNA, name, I think is his name, he may want to look at this because the whole thing about this is it also is a win-win for the taxpayer. And we have one of the best, one of the best accountants in this state that's, that's a part of our program. And she can figure out a way where we can work it into the price of these houses, which will all, already be built below market rate, below, not at market rate, but below market rates to, to make sure we, everything is returned to the city with 1% interest. You can waste money later. Thank you for your time. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Green, do we have any more?
Other than, I see Councilman Dorsey has his hand up.
Oh, thank you. Councilman Dorsey, comment or question? Councilman Dorsey? Is, I don't see him, oh, there. Councilman Dorsey, your hand is raised. Do you have a question or comment? He hasn't responded. You want to go back to the attendees? Are there any more?
No, Madam Vice President, no more attendees have their hands raised. That's it.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any more comments from the committee as a whole? Any, any comments from agencies?
Madam Vice President, we have some call-in callers. Did you want to check? And I have three listed.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Because some of those, a number of those I noticed were, were staff from either agencies or colleagues. You, go ahead, you can start with the first caller if you said you noticed three.
Okay. Once I mute you, you will hear two soft beeps and then you can proceed to give your testimonial comment.
Hello?
Yes, caller?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Shirley Thomas. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Shirley Thomas and I'm a supporter of the Homes program as well. We did present our Dollar House program for the 21st century in 2017. And we are working with the Housing Department and other officials to implement our program. Our program is a little different from the one that's on board now, the 21-0172, mainly because it's very much community-based. We have a component, whereas we will provide jobs and jobs training for people who traditionally have been locked out of employment. Excuse me. And also, at a 1% interest rate, we know that citizens will be able to afford mortgages. And our program, as previously stated, is based on the original Dollar House program, the one that was very successful, not the Dollar House programs that came after. Also, our mortgage, because our mortgages are very affordable, we know that no one will have problems paying the mortgage. And also, our program is also based on the lines of the VA program where they streamline your mortgage. So we don't have a lot of stipulations. Mainly, if you pay your rent or mortgage on time for a year and you have a job for a year, then you will be eligible for our program. Most importantly, as Lieutenant Colonel Bost said, the program actually gives money back to the, to the, to the city because the loans the citizens are taking out, the home buyers are taking out, actually will be repaid to the city. So the city will have, be able to grow its tax base. So it's a win-win situation for citizens, for the city government itself, and just all the way around. So thank you for letting me speak. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you for your comments. Next. The next caller?
Comment, testimony?
Hello?
No one is there, Madam Vice President. Go to the next.
Hello?
Caller, are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, Larry.
It's all right. Caller, are you there? No one is there.
All right. Is that it? Was it just those three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any finals questions or comments? At this point, thank you all. Thank you all for holding on. Thank you, Commissioner from Housing, for your long presentation and lots of information. I know it took time to, to really put that together. And everything has been well noted. And at this point, we're going to go in recess. Thank you all for staying on. Thank you, colleagues.